Good morning, good morning everyone. Happy Pink Tuesday to you. Absolutely. We want to thank our Public Relations Department for playing Aretha Franklin's Pink Cadillac.
Oh, that's so cool.
Absolutely, yeah.
I didn't know it was free way. Look, I was trying to figure this out.
So we're pinked out. This is our tribute to breast cancer awareness and we're going to talk a little bit more about that in just a second. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. And this morning, we have the pleasure of having the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by our good friend Reverend Dr. Wilk Little from the Ebenezer United Methodist Church. And I'm so glad that you're here with us this morning. Come on up Pastor, absolutely. Give her a round of applause as she make her way to the podium. Yes.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It is a pleasure and indeed an honor to be among brothers and sisters in service to God and community. Good morning Chairman Nesbit, Commissioner Washington, and Dr. Williams. I want to first say if I may-
Yes.
-that for the past couple of weeks at Ebenezer, we've been focusing on Psalm 23, "The Lord is my shepherd." I've been at Ebenezer since July, the United Methodist Church around the corner and up the road. And we've been focusing on this song because indeed God is our shepherd whether we acknowledge it or not. "The Lord is my shepherd I shall not want. He makes me lie down in green pastures. He leads me beside still waters. He restores my soul. He leadeth me in the path of righteousness for his name's sake." And how do we know that we're on the path of righteousness? How do we ensure that we remain on the path of righteousness? And I'd like to offer very briefly this morning that we first give up. We give up our own agendas for the sake of God's agenda. Secondly, we pray up. We pray so that we may know God's agenda. Next, we listen up for the shepherd's voice. And then we obey. And each and every person in this room is a leader. Sometimes it's hard for us to obey. But the good shepherd knows. And the good news is this, that on whatever path we find ourselves in life, whether it's one of righteousness or otherwise, the good shepherd will never leave us or forsake us. God will never leave us or forsake us. Let us pray. Oh, good God that you are. We are grateful indeed for the grace to serve. We thank you for your presence in our lives. Oh God, continue to be with us and make yourself known to us and this community, leading us on the path of righteousness. Oh God, let your spirit permeate through this space as your agenda is discussed among your leaders through Christ Jesus, the one in whose name I stand. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, we thank you so much for bringing us into focus this morning and certainly with the 23rd song that we're all so familiar with. But you shined a different light on it this morning and really zoomed in and brought focus to that passage of Scripture. We certainly do appreciate that as you led us into invocation this morning. We are just so fortunate that we live in a place and in a space where even at a political meeting, we can open up with prayer and go before the Lord before we conduct the people's business. So thank you for being here. And let me say thank you to the folks at Ebenezer United Methodist Church. They are doing the doggone thing here in Rockdale County. They're always involved in the community. I think you all have a regular give back that you do on a regular basis over there. And it really services a good portion of our community, particularly on the south side of Rockdale County. So you all are not over there quiet. You're making noise and you're making it on behalf of God and the people of Rockdale County and we appreciate it. Let's give Ebenezer United Methodist Church a round of applause. Thank you so much. And feel free to drop in on us at any time. You don't have to be invited. We love to have meetings when the people of God are certainly present because it really changes the atmosphere in the room. It creates a shift that we appreciate. And so thank you so much for the work that you're doing. And welcome to Rockdale County. I heard you loud and clear. You got here in the month of July. Yes, indeed. Well, before we go forward Director Little, I want to just take a moment and a couple of, I think we'd like to call this a couple of shout outs. First off, we've got popcorn from Poppin Stop. It's pink. I don't know what flavor it is. I don't know whether this is strawberry or I don't know whether pink has a flavor or not. But it is, and the Poppin Stop is a local popcorn distributor here in Rockdale County. We always like to support our small businesses. So thank you to, thank you to Ms. Amber and her staff from over at Poppin Stop for giving us a breast cancer treat this morning. And as we promote our local businesses, we want to encourage you to go on over there and get you some popcorn from Poppin Stop. And we like to support people who are supporting the cause and I thought that was really nice for them to do that. But I want to call up our Clerk of Superior Court, Clerk Janice Morris. Come on up in all her pinkness. Yes, indeed. And I think she has her staff with her. Bring your staff on up with you as well. Give them a round of applause as they coming. And as she's making her way to the podium, I'm just going to say a few words and I'm going to yield to the clerk in just a second. We've been celebrating and I say celebrating, but basically bringing awareness, I'm going to say it the right way. We've been bringing awareness to breast cancer here in Rockdale County collectively with our organization for quite some time. But this year is a little different. Our clerk reached out to our office and the Public Relations Department and said, "Listen, Chairman, can we do a few things different?" I'm going to stop right there. Clerk Morris, take it away.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Wow, we look lovely in pink. Thank you so much Chairman. First and foremost, let me thank you Chairman, Commissioner Washington, Dr. Williams. This has been an ongoing thing for all of us in this community. I remember about a month ago, I came to the chairman and I say, "Chairman, I got elected as the clerk, but I also a serving leader in my history and steering my current status." People have been asking me, "Oh, you used to do the pink thing. What were we going to do about mammograms? Now you the clerk." I don't become elected on one thing and forget about my humble beginnings. So when the ladies start calling me for the breast cancer, I said, "I gotta do something." I don't know how, when, but I went over to the chairman's office, got a chance to meet with his phenomenal public relation. Thank you Melissa, you heard me. And I didn't know how I was going to do it, but we came together with some ideas, some great names and stuff that we needed to do. But I could not have done this without my team. Can you give my team round of applause? We do worship and believe in Think Pink 365. Chairman, I have something for you, but I hope you really catch this one. Are you ready?
I hope you can throw it.
I'm about to put you on the spot.
You put my skills on display.
Are you ready?
Okay, come on. Let's see what you got.
Okay, let's go.
All right. Bring it.
There you go, bro.
I got it. I had everything on that one.
I feel like I was at the Rocky Saints game. Well, we know you, we know what your other life is, the NFL player. Okay. Well, we're going to put that as a, we still say we keep our day job. We do have something a little bit small toky for our commissioners. Thank you. All right. So sometimes we just got to be cool about it. You are so welcome. Well, we have a little bit slideshow. We like to educate, inform the citizens of Rockdale County because this is for you, Rockdale and any woman or a man that is going through the challenges. Am I first? Okay. I would like to introduce you to my Chief of Staff Hillary Malloy. We will all go in sync to give you a little couple of updates.
Good morning.
Good morning.
According to the American Cancer Society, estimated new cases for 2022 for female was 287,850 with estimated deaths of 43,250. For male, the estimated new cases for 2022 was 2,710 with estimated deaths of 530. These are some of the symptoms of breast cancer. A new lump in the breast or underarm, thickening or swelling of part of the breast, irritation of breast skin, redness or flaky skin in the nipple area of the breast, pulling in of the nipple or pain in the nipple area, nipple discharge other than breast milk including blood, any change in the size or the shape of the breast, pain in any area of the breast. According to the 2021 U.S. Census for Georgia, excuse me, Georgia is ranked the third in the country for uninsured individuals.
Those are facts, not Janice's facts. We must yield to those facts. It has been known, one out of eight women will be diagnosed, one out of 1,000 men will be diagnosed. I have to stop and pause for a moment because the youngest person I engaged with breast cancer is at the age of 19. I do not wish political or democracy to set an age for something as feel something, say So we did our kickoff last week with the city as well as our Rockdale County. So just here, this yield to a couple of few of the pictures that was successfully done in Rockdale County as we raised funds for the uninsured of the people who do not have access to healthcare. So we have our Commissioner, Councilwoman Connie Alsobrook, our Mayor, we did a box out Rockdale County, pink gloves. We also had a couple of the students from what is called Higher Achievers came out to sing a song. And as well, we had our own famous Doran Daniels to do jazz on the lawn. So a lot of our employees came out to have lunch on the lawn. And at that time, we was fundraising for breast cancer. So this is a few of our pictures as we go along. So letting you know, we have swept the corridor, Rockdale County from south to west to north everywhere to talk about Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Next slide. As I stated, men, women, if you feel something, please say something. What it impacts a lot of us who, many who don't have insurance, I'm talking directly to you and you and both of y'all three. We are blessed as employers, employees have insurance, but there's so many of them don't. And those are the ones that go undetected because they don't know where to go, where to go, where the resources. We have to stand in solidarity to tell them, "I can help. I'll take you to the doctor's apartment. I'll take you to some places." If they feel something, say something. If not, get your manual first, mammogram. Please do so because you deserve to live like everyone else. Next slide. Just to give you a few who have fought the fight like a girl and they won. Ms. Jerry, Ms. May, Ms. Sharon, Cheryl, and Angie. And we had a 92-year-old lady that I got a chance to meet and I did not remember her name. I apologize for that. But two of those out of that whole seam of pictures are two of my employees. Ms. Angie, Ms. Cheryl, proud of you. You done that and you fought the fight. Next slide. Let me know if I'm accompanying Yahweh or somebody. Thank you.
We want to thank all of our partners who were able to provide 75 limited mammograms for the uninsured. A few of our community resources include Rockdale County Helping Hands Clinic, MedCure, Piedmont Rockdale, Rockdale Health Department, Kimberly Atkins Foundation, and the Georgia Cancer Center, which is also a recommendation for any follow-up care for patients in need of care.
Very good. Let's give them a round of applause too.
Madam Clerk, excuse me. Next slide, please.
Yeah, we almost there. Thank you. With this slide is, please take note of all the names in the resources that is ready for a woman to get their mammogram. Thank you.
Next slide, please.
Oh, I have to say this. Okay. Next slide, please.
I'm not sure.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, who's doing this? Okay. All right. Chair, Commissioner, and the citizen of Rockdale County. We did not do this alone without our gracious sponsors. Let me just give you a great few of them. Jamila just only tipped it by who they all are, but let me tell you who they are. Our AKA, Chata Omega, State Farm, Courtesy Ford, Wesley Peace Street Group, Digital Mammography, Bama Boys Toing, Helping Hands Outreach Clinic, Nancy Pizzeria, Top Shelf, Bank of America, Old Town Awards, Tide Palace, Southern Staffing, Beyond the Bell, Battle Box, Milano's, Anthony Lucas, Vince Evans, and Mrs. Cynthia Evans, Brad Southern, Jericho and Sharon Morgan, Isabel Rogers, Jennifer Edwards, Jennifer Beasley, Brian and Candace Fred. Just the name, so many have stepped up to the plate. Without all these contributions, we would not be able to give free mammograms. So again, the total is 75 free mammograms to a woman or a man that will be going to Digital Mammography because they are our co-sponsors where they normally charge $150, they decided to charge $75. So we're going to give them a round of applause. So next slide, please. Let me just give you a true testimonial as we present Mrs. Chris Raglin.
I am an eight-year breast cancer survivor. I was diagnosed after a routine routine mammogram. When I first had my mammogram, I had to say that it had to have been hard to manage. How frightened I was in person. I was so scared. I was stronger than her to take my sister. I had two girlfriends, my two girlfriends, my brothers, my sisters. It's a long, long journey.
So Ms. Chris is famous because she's one of our employees right now doing the board of equalization as we speak. So Ms. Chris goes all over. She also have sponsored and worked with the NFL on pretty, plenty of occasions back in the day when I had a chance to work with her on a previous journey for her. I would like to say thank you, Ms. Chris, because she's always humble to encourage another woman to go get her mammogram. Next slide, please.
At the beginning of this year, I went for a routine mammogram and by the end of the day, they had called me back and said, "You need to come back up here." And like anybody, it would have scared the out of me. So they scheduled appointment for the following week and I went back up there and they told me that I had to get another mammogram on my left breast. They saw something suspicious. And they made me stay there and wait while they read the mammogram. And it was the longest, about 20 minutes of my life. They came in and pulled me aside and said, "As of right now, we don't think it's anything to worry about. We're going to watch it. We're going to keep doing mammograms every six months." And then I went for another follow-up in July. I have to go for another one in January. So for the foreseeable future, I have to get mammograms every six months versus every year. At this point, we're just hoping it's still nothing, that they're going to continue to watch. So it could have been me too.
Thank you, Shelley. Thank you for your testimony. Chair, Board, colleagues, would you do the honor to stand in solidarity, to go home and ask your sister, your mother, your niece, "Have you had your mammogram?" It's okay to have that conversation now because Chairman, we've been in COVID for two and a half years. Some women got skipped. I'm going to be honest with you. I did not go through COVID, but I thank God. Ta-tas are all clear. But what that means, we must educate the importance of making sure your wife and your daughters go get their mammogram. Sheri, I know I'm with you, standing with you. Just know, you're not alone. I'm going to ask you one of y'all to do. Raise your hand. How many of you all lost a family member to breast cancer? Here's a message. I lost my mom's baby sister at the age of 46. She was diagnosed out of my clinic. It was the hardest day of my life to tell one of my own. And she went on to be with the Lord. And the last words was for her, "I didn't get diagnosed in October." You must Think Pink 365. Every day, a woman is being diagnosed. 365 days out of the year. Thank you, thank you. Ms. Melissa, you do the honors to come up for a second. All right. Melissa stood side by side with us during this whole process, Chairman. And Chairman, thank you for turning the water pink at the water company. I sit out there and watch it. So I have a little video for you that I play some my personal page. Ready? Are you willing to box cancer out of here? Uh-uh, you taking forever. She can't fight. All right, Melissa?
Yes.
Would you do the honors? Because I know you're a powerful young lady going among a lot of people in the community. Would you fight cancer out of here with me?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Team, what we going to do?
Backhand out of Rockdale.
So Commissioners, we want to thank our Clerk and the team from our Clerk's office. Let's give them another round of applause, absolutely. And Clerk Morris, I can't take credit for the water. I have to yield to our Department of Water Resources, particularly Deputy Director Von Jameson who's here. And he leads up the, what we call affectionately Big Blue, our custom service center. He made sure that, he worked with General Services to get the water nice and pink over at the Water Custom Service Office. Breast cancer is very serious and we make a big deal out of it. We pause, we yield to come to a point of awareness here in Rockdale County. And so I do support the efforts and all of what Clerk Morris and her team has led this morning to bring awareness, not only to our workforce, but our community as a whole. At this time, Director, it's time for us to move forward with special recognition of it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a slight modification this morning to the presentations. We will be hearing a grants presentation this morning from the Finance Department, which is Item A. And we will be hearing the Employee Benefits Highlight Presentation by Epic and Talent Management, which is Item C. But we will not be hearing Item D this morning.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, so-
Start with the finance.
Finance, all right, very good.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Director.
Mark Lewis, CFO for Rockdale County. I have the pleasure this morning of bringing forward our new Grants Manager, Alakee Wealthy. Alakee comes to us with a great deal of experience as a Grants Manager. Initially, worked in for the state of Alabama in their mental health division as their Grant Manager. Did three years there and then worked three years on their own company. She's been with us since June, but just most recently in October, accepted the role as Grant Manager here in Rockdale County. Like to present Ms. Alakee Wealthy.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning, colleagues. My name, as the Director said, is Alakee Wealthy. I had to follow the Cancer Society, the pinks. I'm going to talk a little bit about the grants that have been awarded to our department. Currently, we're, the Grants Department is managing about 20 million, but in the last 10 months, we've gotten, in the last 12 months, I apologize, we've gotten 10 million in grants. And I'm going to talk about awarded by department. The Judicial Circuit has approximately $5 million in grants. The Sheriff's Office has 2 million. The Senior Services has, oh, and I'm sorry, next slide, I'm actually on page four. Forgive me. Right there, and Senior Services and Transportation has approximately 1 million. Emergency Management has about 184,000. Rockdale Water Resources and Park and Recreation have about 150,000. The District Attorney's Office, 71,000, and Talent Management, 35,000. Next slide. I'm just going to talk about a few that were awarded here recently. We were awarded, the grant is the- the grant is the Sheriff's Office Behavioral Health and Co-Responder Team Grant, and it's affectionately called Protect and Connect, and it's for 540,000. That grant is really, really a big deal because right now in the country, mental awareness is so important. And so to have that grant is really important for Rockdale County. On the next slide, please. Senior Services was awarded a grant for, to provide community-based services in the home for the elderly and disabled. That grant is approximately 474,000. A little, down a little lower on the page is the Adult Felony Court. There's a grant that was awarded for 265,000, and it's to provide intensive probation and treatment program. And the next page, this will be the last that I point out, but Rockdale County has been awarded a backlog felony grant. It's for $2 million, and it's for, it's to address particularly serious violent felonies. And if you can skip to, it's, it's throughout the awarded page, we're going to go to submitted. We have several grants. The page is titled Submitted and Pending. It's four slides away. The next page. Thank you. We have submitted several grants that are pending. It's about 87, it's about 87, it's about 87 million dollars in pending grants that are submitted. I'm sorry. And it's for, it's for the various departments of Rockdale County. If you skip to two more slides, the denied slides, we have some grants that we submitted that were denied, and there are many factors why grants are denied, but it is our goal for all the grants that we submit for them to be approved. And so we do get feedback to try to figure out why they were denied, and if at all possible, they will come around to be submitted again. Just to recap, our department, we are overseeing currently 20 million in grants. There are new grants, it's not on the slide, but there are new grants that we have submitted for, and they're infrastructure grants, and this is important. President Biden has passed that new bipartisan infrastructure law, and it's to rebuild the roads and bridges and rails. And so we are looking into applying for grants that are consistent with that. And I apologize, this was new information that I had, and it's not on the slide, but we have already applied for five grants, and there's one that's coming at the end of January as well. And they are roadway projects and construction projects. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Wealthy, thank you so much for your presentation. Commissioners, any question?
No.
Ms. Wealthy? All right, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, we now have a presentation from Epic Insurance Brokers and Consultants with Talent Management.
All righty.
Good morning, Madam Commissioners and Chairman. I am Bianca Mallory Thompson with the Department of Talent Management. Before I introduce our speaker this morning, I wanted to note that Wellness is actually doing a lunch and learn with the help of Kaiser Permanente to bring on a licensed physician, Dr. Sylvia Morris, to talk about breast cancer awareness and also training detection as well. It'll be hosted today at Johnson Park for all who RSVP'd from 12 to 1:00.
Very good. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Moving right along. So today I have Epic, our benefit brokers. We'll have Mr. James Ford present our benefits highlights for this year, for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Ford.
As always, it's in order to thank you all for simply having me over here this morning for a few minutes. We'll start with a little recap. If we could go back a slide, thank you. Just a little bit about what happened last year. We, of course, went through a pretty lengthy RFP process to refresh and review our current benefit offerings here at Rockdale County. We also locked in many of those benefits and multi-year rate guarantees so that we could better predict the cost of those benefits. We projected a savings in claims, which looks like we'll hit that mark. We'll know that at the end of the year. So therefore, this year, we only had two renewals that we had to negotiate or review on behalf of Rockdale County, one being the Kaiser Fully Insured HMO, and of course, the Aetna Medicare Advantage for the post-65 retiree population. All other benefits remain the same. We can go to the next slide, please. On the Kaiser renewal, they came out at almost 11%. We went back and did a little negotiating and got that down to 9%, which was a little more favorable based on our actuarial models. There's about 151 employees and 258 total folks. The previous year in the RFP, they gave us a rate hole, so they didn't give us an increase in the previous year. So we predicted a mild increase this year. And then the overall increase was about 138,000. That was our original projection. We can go to the next slide. That projection really doesn't have any impact to the county in that we went with Model One, and we added that 9% to the overall monthly employee rates. Next slide, please. The Aetna Medicare Advantage, of course, is for those post-65 retirees who have Medicare AMB. There was an increase to that renewal at about $10.40 for those 103 Medicare-eligible employees. And so we put that in place as well. And the next slide. So we are moving through open enrollment right now. We are, we have completed our retiree mailing. We are fielding questions from the retirees if they have any questions regarding benefits or rates. And then later on this year, we'll begin our 2023 strategic planning. And that is all unless there are any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ford and team from Epic this morning? Let me just say, we appreciate the relationship. We know the work that you're doing with our Department of Talent Management, particularly our Benefits Manager, Ms. Bianca Mallory. So thank you for the work that you're doing. We appreciate these updates. This is on behalf of our employees and making sure that we're giving them premium coverage in terms of their families and the needs they have. You also talked about our retirees as well. So this update is very welcome. So thank you so much.
I appreciate you, Chairman. I appreciate that team. They made sure I was in pink today as well. So I appreciate Ms. Bianca and the team.
You got the memo.
How fantastic.
Thank you. All right, Director Relich.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind the Chairman and the Board this morning that we do not have a consent agenda, so we will be going item by item this morning.
Okay, all right.
So I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second that the minutes on October the 11th, 2022, through October 12, 14th of 2022, and October the 18th of 2022 are approved. Are there any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So there's no unfinished business. We'll move right on to the regular agenda. Item 494.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 494 is with the Georgia Council for the Arts through the District Attorney's Office. This is for the Youth Intervention, Enrichment, and Learning by Design Yield Grant in the amount of $6,000. The term is July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023, and this is submitted for ratification.
I move to ratify the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item.
Item 495 is with the United States Department of Justice through the Sheriff's Office. This is for Bulletproof Vest Partnership for the FY22 Grant in the amount of $22,030. The term is April 1st, 2022, through August 31st, 2024.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Item 496 is with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety through the Sheriff's Office. This is for fiscal year 2023 Heat Grant in the amount of $108,876.60. The term is October 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2023.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Item 497 is with the United States Department of Justice through the Sheriff's Office and the Co-Responding Team. This is for the Protect and Connect Grant in the amount of 450, 540,000, $540,000, and the term is October 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2025.
And I think we've got representatives from the Sheriff's Office on that particular item. If you'd like, come on up and tell us a little bit about it, if you would, at this time.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Captain Tyler Hooks from the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office.
And he's pink.
Captain Pass.
Those are cute. Your badge.
Thank you. Okay, the Protect and Connect Grant, the project is to establish a Behavioral Health Co-Responding Team, being sought to promote effective strategies by the law enforcement to identify and reduce the risk of harm to individuals with mental health disorders or co-occurring mental health substance use disorders who encounter law enforcement and to improve public safety. We plan to use a multifaceted approach to improve public health and safety responses and outcomes with individuals with mental health disorders and mental health substance use disorders that is based on a best practice model that align with sequential intercept model ideologies. The target population, individuals with mental health disorders or co-occurring mental health substance use disorders who encounter law enforcement will benefit with the proposed project. Based on our historical data, the proposed number of individuals to be served is around 800 individuals in Rockdale County. That's, you know, obviously more than two a day that we are encountering.
Well, Captain Hooks, we certainly do appreciate you and Captain Pass and the Sheriff's Office, all the work you do. And this whole Protect and Connect Program in terms of mental health is a big plus with folks engaging or encountering with law enforcement. So this is a big deal. It's a plus for Rockdale County.
Yes, sir. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the work from Ms. Alice Centron here. She did a lot of work and to help us get the.
Let's give Alice a round of applause. Well, we appreciate you all working very closely with the Finance Department, particularly Ms. Centron, who's been doing a lot of work on behalf of the county with all of our grants and grant administration. But Commissioner, you were about to say something.
I was, and it so complements the stepping up initiative. It's really, you mentioned sequential intercept, and it's really a piece of that. Excuse me, when we went through the sequential intercept mapping two years ago, October of 2020, we looked at gaps and where we could go. And I think, Dennis, didn't you participate in all that mapping? Yes. And this is just another component of the goals that were set at that time. So I would, I am super excited about getting started with a mental health professional.
Commissioner Lawson?
I just want to thank you and thank Sheriff Levitt for his leadership. I would say that, you know, he got the memo, he got it so quickly and with such passion that he's able to help our inmates. And he understands what, how the connection of the justice system and the mental health system helps us all. Of course, with Dr. Williams, that synergy is beneficial to Rockdale County. So thank you all for doing this and bringing this, bringing awareness, going after resources that will help us. So I appreciate that. And I'm sure all of the citizens of Rockdale County will do the same.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all being here. All right, next item, please.
We got to vote this one in. It's too good not to. We need a motion.
Oh, okay.
That's right.
Oh, that's me. It's on me. I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any additional questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, next item, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item 498 is evidence-based associates LLC through the juvenile court to provide functional family therapy. This is an estimated not-to-exceed charge of $137,751 per year. It's one year with the option to renew two additional one-year periods. This is a grant-funded expenditure.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I was just really fascinated last night when I was going through everything. So those, these first five items that we have just approved were either receiving grants that had been awarded or grant-funded contracts, and it's a total of $814,657, which is, you know, we couldn't do it without our grants, people.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's a, that's a big deal, and it wants a round of applause.
Those, these are services that, you know, we wouldn't be able to provide otherwise. And we just, it, it's exciting.
Well, I think, Commissioner, it's great that you spotlighted that because sometimes our citizens don't know the depth of the services that we actually provide the community. This doesn't happen in every community. Rockdale is a community that cares. When you think about the number of grants, when I was listening to Ms. Wealthy this morning, the number of grants that she was just kind of rattling off in the particular areas that really go back into the community. This one in particular, it really helps law enforcement, it helps families, and it says Protect and Connect. So you're absolute, you're spot on with making sure that we are aware of the type of delivery of services that are happening in our community that we should never take for granted. And this is a community that cares, and I'm just glad we're serving at this time to be able to distribute this type of leadership and award these types of grants and usher them in. And I know we gave Ms. Centron, and certainly everyone in the Finance Department plays a part, Alice has been with us for quite some time, and she has been champion on the front lines of making sure that we get the right kind of grants in this community for all of our citizens and for the Sheriff's Office, Parks and Rec, I mean, numerous areas of fire services. So let's give Alice another round of applause. We're fortunate, Commissioners, to have so many talented people on board here in Rockdale County. Let's move on now, if you would, to the next item.
All right, item 499 is with Busy Bee Exterminators Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for pest control for county facilities. It's a unit price contract. Change Order Number One to Contract 2022-141. This is to add the public defender, the new offices for the District Attorney, and the new 911 call center has additional buildings. It's an additional $140 per month with $360 initial setup treatment.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions other than the one that I'm about to make? I'm just glad, I want, Director Hammer is here from General Services, and I'm so glad that we have a contract with an exterminator. The other night, I had to swing back by the office, and as soon as I deactivated the alarm, I saw a roach by the size of a toddler.
He wasn't talking to you, was he?
I was caught, I was caught between the fact that I had deactivated the alarm and whether I'd go down the hall or back out the door. And I didn't even have my pistol with me, because I would have bust that rope wide open in the hallway of the VOC. I'm telling you, had you seen it, Ms. Johnson, you would have screamed like a nine-year-old girl.
Like you did.
Like I did. Like I did. And listen, if we had a video recorder in the hallway during the night, I would have played that with no shame in my face. So y'all would have seen the Chairman screaming like a nine-year-old girl. So hats off to the Department of General Services. Make sure we get the invoice satisfied. Those people over at Busy Bee, don't make sure their invoice is never late. You need them to spray and spray and spray. You need them to spray and spray and spray some more. Yes, indeed. I'm from, listen, I've seen roaches before. I'm from, I know, but let me tell you. That, that fella that I saw the other night was something else. And I don't know.
Oh, my God.
Uh, don't ask me what happened to him, because I don't know. This is the first time I'm revealing this, and Miss Lee know nothing about it. Director Rullis, Sanders, they knew nothing about any of this. And I'm just praying that he exited the building and he's not lingering somewhere up in that building. Yes, yes, indeed. I just had to get that out. Now, where are we with this thing?
I know, you're making it harder to track. As long as that roach wasn't bigger than those squirrels, I'm good. So, all right. All right, next item.
So we close this one out?
Yes, we have.
Okay, very, next item, please.
Yes. Item five hundred is with Go Forth Williamson Incorporated. This is for the Water Resources Department to remove, rebuild, and install high-service pumps and motors for item number three and five. This is in the amount of forty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars. It's a hundred and eighty days from the notice to proceed.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item five oh one is with Hawkins Incorporated through the Water Resources Department. This is for sole source chemical supply for copper sulfate. It's a unit price contract in the amount of nineteen dollars per gallon. It's a one year with one option to renew two additional one-year periods, an estimated yearly cost of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item five oh two is with Sterling Water Technologies LLC through the Water Resources Department. This is for the polyblend orthophosphate. It's a change order number one to contract two thousand and twenty-one dash two fifteen to increase in unit price from point five one seven three per pound to point nine one two per pound for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-two. The effective date is January first, two thousand and twenty-three, and also to increase the unit price from point nine one two per pound to one dollar, point one two four per pound, end of, through the end of two thousand and twenty-three. This is to renew the contract term also through December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and it's at an estimated yearly cost of two hundred and five thousand dollars.
That's a huge increase.
It is.
That's almost, the first one almost doubled.
Right. And then when it went up again, right, in January.
But you know, and thank you, Commissioners. I don't know, I asked Director Pete, would you come up and just shed a little light on the significance of this chemical for our water? Yes, sir? Tell us why we need to have this.
Okay, good morning. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. This chemical, polyblend phosphate, this chemical is used to remove iron and magnesium from our raw water source. So it's pretty much used for the, you know, the treatment of our, of our water before it reaches our water facility to provide clean water.
Very good, very good. Now, I think in the conversation we were having just the other day, what's the age of our current treatment facility?
Well, we'll be twenty years. We're getting ready to have a twenty-year anniversary.
Okay.
Coming up next month.
Director Pete, what does that mean for the condition of this current plant and thinking forward for Rockdale, and so much emphasis on infrastructure? What is your recommendation based upon your assessment?
Well, right now, we have a facility where, we have a great facility. Actually, the water treatment facility that we have, you know, we've gotten a lot of awards, you know, for providing clean water. So, so right now, you know, we're in a great, you know, great condition. You know, we don't have any, I don't have any concerns. We don't have any concerns with this facility. We're still providing clean water.
Okay, all right. Well, that's what we want to hear. Thank you. Thank you. Let's give water a round of applause. Gotta have clean water, absolutely. So.
So I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item, please.
All right, item five oh three is with Univar Solutions USA Incorporated through the Water Resources Department. This is for the hydrofluoric acid. This is change order number one to contract two thousand and twenty-one dash two nineteen. It's an increase in unit price from point two one six seven per pound to point two four nine five per pound. This is renewal contract, the term through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and it's an estimated yearly cost of forty-six thousand dollars.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item five oh four is with Cedar Kim LLC through the Water Resources Department. This is for the polyaluminum chloride, and this is a change order number one to contract two thousand and twenty-one dash two seventeen. It's an increase in unit price from point one seven six per pound to point two one three per pound through the end of two thousand and twenty-two. Also, an increased unit price from point two three three per pound for fourteen months effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three. It's to renew the contract term through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and an estimated yearly cost of one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item five oh five is with Cross Check Incorporated through the Talent Management Department, and this is for the pre-hire reference verifications. This is change order number one to contract two thousand and twenty-one dash one fifty-two. It's an increase in price from four thousand, five hundred dollars per year to four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars per year, and to renew the term for twenty-four months through October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
That's a ten percent increase right there.
Next item, please.
All right, item five oh six is with Newton County, Georgia, through the Rockdale County Emergency Management Agency. This is a memorandum of understanding for radio, for the radio interoperability with Newton County nine-one-one system, and this is ongoing until terminated.
So I see the Deputy Director from EMA is here. Ms. Barnum, come on up and tell us why this is so important to us to have this MOU with Newton County.
Hello.
Good morning.
Um, so currently how it works is if we have sheriffs or fire dispatched to Newton County to assist in the MOU, what they have to do to do radio interoperability is they arrive on scene, and there's two options. So option one is a Newton County individual would give our team one radio to share for the entire crew that's dispatched for the MOU. So it's usually one radio between four to five people. That poses a bit of a safety issue. The second solution would be, everything has to be routed back through the nine-one-one system and then called back in on our radios, and it creates this huge loop that costs a lot of time. So what this MOU does is it makes sure that when we're in Newton County, activated on an MOU, we can utilize their radio systems so that we can all kind of be on scene and respond way quicker. It ensures that everyone's on the same channel, there's no sharing radios. There's a lot of licensing things, so that's why an MOU is necessary. But this just kind of makes sure that everyone who responds to an incident in Newton County can respond safely and the best they can.
Well, thank you for that update. Time saved lives, so we're glad that this MOU exists between Rockdale and Newton. Absolutely. Thank you, Deputy Director. All right, next item, please.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
All right, there we go. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item.
All right, item five oh seven is a requisition through the General Services Department. This is for Jericho Design Group LLC for professional services for design and engineering of construction documents for the fire training center in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item five oh eight is a requisition through the General Services Department for P Marshall and Associates LLC for professional services for, to do a redesign and gangway with kayak boat slip. This is change order to original PO of fourteen thousand dollars. This is adding twelve thousand, three hundred dollars to the new PO total of twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars.
So I am assuming that that's for additional work?
Well, I won't let you assume. Come on up, Director Hammer.
Did you hear the question inflection at the end?
Just for the record, I think the Palmetto bug was early for your holiday drop-in.
Well, that's another reason why we no longer have a holiday drop-in at the BOC building. And I'm gonna stop right there.
I couldn't resist. Yes, P Marshall Associates is a structural engineer that was engaged to the, to do the boat slip, the kayak launch during their initial investigation where they did the survey and the grading. They had to go a different direction due to the steep slope and the intrusiveness into the water buffer. So they're doing additional engineering work to route it to a different place to be an easier slope, and it'll have landing spots already on exposed rocks, so it won't be, it won't intrude on the buffer as much.
It's a lot more safer that way, too.
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any additional comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Okay, item five oh nine is a requisition through the Stormwater Management Department for Benchmark Management. This is for Plan Reviewing Services and Construction Inspection Services. This is contract change order to the original PO in the amount of two hundred seventy-two thousand, nine hundred dollars, adding two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, making the new PO total four hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, Director Simpkins, come on and tell us, that's a heck of a change order. Come on, tell us about that. You know you were gonna babysit that through that one.
There's no problem.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone. How you doing?
Good morning.
Uh, what Benchmark provides us is vigilance and staff augmentation. When I took over the Stormwater Department, there was little to no supervision of any of these developers that are out here building these nice homes around Rockdale. So what you would end up having is moving into subdivision, and next thing you know, why is a sinkhole in your yard?
Right.
Well, the sinkhole is in your yard because the developer did not properly install the infrastructure to convey that stormwater from the street through, through those yards to the local areas and creeks. What Benchmark does is gives us peace of mind that we have our eyes out there in the field watching these people install these pipes and systems and make sure that they install too cold and that we just don't end up having your phone blowing up from citizens wondering why I paid four hundred thousand for a home and now I've got a big sinkhole, you know, in the street or in my driveway or in my yard. So that is what they provide us is vigilance. One thing I will say that's not noted on that is that there's also a training component to that, to where they have been taking out our in-house staff and really just kind of making sure that they are up to speed on what we do. And so, you know, down the line, I can kind of phase that out and keep that money in my budget. But, but for right now, I mean, I need them out there, you know, with their eyes on this pipe that's going into the ground. Also, from the plan review aspect, you know, we know development is the lifeblood of the community, and once again, phones blow up when plans don't get reviewed in a timely manner, or, you know, there's a lot of back and forth with these consultants turning these plans. Benchmarks ensures that we get complete reviews, proper comments turned around, and that process flows, your phone doesn't blow up, I get to keep my job, and everybody's happy. In a nutshell, just being honest, so.
Especially here.
You know. And that's where we are.
Director Simpkins, on that note, we appreciate that you are inspecting what you expect. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you so much.
I guess you better vote that one in.
Yeah, yes, yes.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Okay, item five-ten is with, is an expenditure request for the DeKalb County Revenue and License Administration through the Water Resources Department. This is for sewage treatment for August twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I move to approve this request as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item five eleven is a request of surplus of equipment from the Water Resources Department.
I move to declare these items as surplus as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item five twelve is a volunteer appointment. It's the request to reappoint Ms. Ernestine Stovall Goolsbee to the Planning Commission for a second term.
I move to approve the appointment as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And we want to thank Ms. Stovall Goolsbee for her.
Yes.
Time and talent and dedication to Rockdale County, serving on the Planning Commission. That's not an easy task.
At all.
At all, and we certainly do appreciate her, so I wanted to highlight that. Next item, please.
Item five thirteen is a requisition through the Parks and Recreation Department for United Maintenance Incorporated. This is for the new Cyclone water heater. It's the current boiler water heater at Johnson Park Recreation Center has failed, so this is an emergency replacement in the amount of fifty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I do want Director Rettin, real quick, just to tell us how old was the one that failed and give us a little bit of history on what happened here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for calling me up for that. Um, yes, the current water heater that we have in the building is thirty years old.
Thirty years old.
So it's way past its life, life cycle, and it did fail. And I did have a couple of citizens reach out, you know, to, you know, express their concerns, and so glad you called me up, as I said. So with this water heater, it's not the same water heater that's in your house. It's three hundred and ninety-nine thousand BTU water heater.
Oh, wow.
It's huge. The current water heater that we have is eighty percent efficient. We're switching to a ninety-six percent efficient water heater. And one of the reasons is we did add on ADA room, which added more showers, so we needed a water heater with more efficiency to make sure that when you're taking a shower, the water is hot for a longer period of time, and you're able to take a shower, a hot water, water, a hu, a hot shower, um, after you've done what you needed to do in the gymnasium. So, um, and another reason is we had to do our due diligence. The technology is different in the water heaters now. Director Hammer, I've been working with him on his project. Um, there is a system that's a tankless water heater that we explored because the price was not as expensive as this. However, it was not, um, compatible with our setup at Johnson Park, so we ended up going with this, uh, in particular, water heater to make sure that it's efficient, so.
Director Reddman, I'm so glad that I did call you up because this was one of those items with a number of people, particularly our senior population that utilizes Johnson Paul, Johnson Park and the pool and all the amenities. They would have given us plenty calls about this.
Yes.
This is not the time of the year.
No, it's not.
To be in cold water. And, and you said something, I heard folks chuckle a little bit when you talked about getting out of it and, and taking a shower, needing a hot shower, because with all the weight room and all the stuff that's going on, we want to make sure that hygiene stays, stays where it needs to stay.
Absolutely.
And that, uh, we have the right, um, facilities to do that. I also appreciate you explaining this is not, uh, the type of water heater that you will have at your house. This is a whole different.
It's commercial.
Yes, sir.
It's large.
Keep, keep up the good work. Let's give Parks a round of applause. Alright, um, Executive Director Rose, like we're down to public comment?
We are, and I have received no red cards, so does anyone wish to speak this morning? Okay.
Shut the front door. Okay. Alright, okay. Well, we're gonna move right into board comment, and I'll start with Commissioner Washington.
I, I will make mine hopefully brief. Number one, thank you, Madam Clerk, for all of the work that you've always done on breast cancer awareness. You know, I've, I've said many times about my former paralegal, who's now an attorney, that, um, that you gave a free mammogram and, and probably saved her life, so, you know, we're always indebted to you and your calls, so thank you so much. Um, I did have my mammogram last week, and I was gonna do this whole Facebook thing with posting pictures and everything, but it becomes so personal when you're there and you're, you're going through it because, you know, and, and my story was very similar to yours. They called me back because they found, you know, it was a density that they weren't nor, that they didn't normally, um, have. So I had to go back, and you stressed out and everything, and you trying to pray your way through it. But once again, I always thank God for the technology that we have today because that is saving lives. So luckily, I, all is clear on mine, but once again, I have to do the mammograms every six months, just like she does, so that we make sure that everything's okay. So, um, breast cancer awareness, you know, please, please, please go and get your mammograms because it could save your life. Talk to somebody, encourage somebody to go and get their mammograms because you could save their life. So that's one thing. Second thing is it's also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'm gonna tell this story so that if anybody else is in a similar situation, I had a girlfriend who was going through a divorce, and she and I were talking about all the things that her husband were doing to her, and I was like, what in the world? This man is cra, like crazy, 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 to the point where I gave her one of my weapons. That's how afraid of, for her I was. Like, I was like, you need this. Like, you, he's going completely insane, and she's telling me, telling me, telling me, and I'm, you know, praying for her, we got a protective order for her, all of this stuff. And so, uh, last week, she texts me and says, "I did not realize that I was a, a victim of domestic violence until right now, when I'm going through this training at work." She did not realize that all of the, the fact that I gave her a weapon, that she was going through domestic violence until she went through a training class at work. So I'm going, I don't wanna, um, go through all of the signs of domestic violence, but talk to your family members about it, and if you hear somebody going through some stuff, instead of just giving them a gun, tell them you're going through domestic violence. Um, these are all the things that you need to be aware of, but make them understand what they're going through in their lives. So fortunately, she's divorced now, got the restraining, and we're good, but the fact that she didn't realize what she was going through was problematic to me. The final thing is, it's also Bully Awareness Month, or eradication of bully, and I didn't realize that until like last week when our district attorney posted something on her, on her, um, Facebook page about bully awareness. I don't know why they do everything in October. Like, it seems like they should give something to March because they don't have nothing to do. October has everything. But, um, talk to your children about bullying and see if they're the bully. I don't want to tell on my daughter, but, you know, there was a time where she could have had a couple of conversations in her life, so, you know, make sure that you're, you're making sure that your children are keeping other children safe. That's all I have for right now.
Alright, Commissioner Williams.
Well, I want to piggyback on, uh, that with, um, Madam Clerk, Janice Morris, who's been a friend of mine for many years and her Helping Hands Outreach Clinic, and the work that they have done for so long with, um, breast cancer awareness, and I, I, I really appreciate it. And in fact, I had forgotten to make my appointment, and so where I usually go, I called and I couldn't get in until like January. And I did find one, uh, someplace early in the morning in downtown in Decatur. I hate early morning, but it's soon, so it's just in a few weeks. I've had that experience of being called back, and it is very nerve-wracking. It's, you know, it's like, oh my gosh, what, what is going on? Um, so I, I appreciate all that you have done for bringing awareness and your staff for helping you with that. Saturday, I was able to go to, um, a fundraiser for a new nonprofit that is here in Rockdale County, and it's called Aware, and it's a wildlife center that rehabilitates Georgia's injured and orphaned native wild animals and educates the community about peaceful coexistence with wildlife. They had the cutest woodchuck, a disabled woodchuck on a leash who was, they were walking around. Um, it was amazing.
So this is in Rockdale?
It's in Rockdale, and they are partnering with the art, the Rockdale Art Farm.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And, and so they're going to be on that property, and they had concept drawings of the buildings that they're going to build there. But, um, you know, I just thought it was so nice to have something like that right here in Rockdale, where, uh, because they gave me a few minutes to, to speak, and I welcomed them to Rockdale and on behalf of, of all three of us. But, um, you know, as a teacher, I always was, tried to bring in the environment, nature, clean water, you know, all of those kinds of things. It didn't matter what I was teaching. I always tried to bring that in, and so I'm, I'm excited. If I was teaching school, I'd still, I'd be taking my students out there. Um, the last thing I have is that early voting is still going on. Um, I was over here at the office yesterday, and as I was crossing the street, a man in a car stopped and said, "Where do I go vote?" And so, you know, I told him down on West Avenue. So let me remind people that there is no longer any voting at 1400 Parker Road. It's on West Avenue. You can't miss the signs. Um, they're on the corner, there's arrows pointing to, um, the voting building, the election building. So, um, there has been, the fir, we voted the first day, and I think I mentioned this maybe before, but the first day of vote, early voting, Rockdale County surpassed the previous, whatever you call it.
Primary, early issue?
No, in a general election. They, they surpassed the number of early voters. And the last time, the, the, the time that we beat was in 2015.
Wow.
So, um, and it was by quite a bit more, so.
Yeah.
So don't forget to early vote. That's it.
Commissioner?
No, I'm good.
Okay, move right along. Um, so I just have a few, and we're gonna move on. I want to say thank you to our Public Relations Department, the Fire Department, and all of those who came out to support our Pondell Community Love Day. This past weekend, we had over the, uh, in the Pondell community. The kids had a fantastic time, and we were able to go over to Pondell and just love on that community in a big, big way. Uh, uh, the weather was just perfect Saturday. It couldn't have gotten any better, so thank you to them. Also, Summer Hill Baptist Church celebrated 112 years.
Wow.
Uh, in Rockdale County, and they're under the leadership of Senior Pastor Johnny Cobb, so, um, I wanted to say, let's give Summer Hill Baptist Church a round of applause. Also, big, another big milestone for Rockdale County, uh, this Sunday, uh, this past Sunday, RISA celebrated 50 years in Rockdale County. Let's give RISA a round of applause. And in the old timers, it's been around Rockdale County for about two hours. They know the impact that RISA has made on the young people and the youth of this community for 50 long years, so that was a big, big deal, and they're moving forward with some new, um, innovative thoughts about how they can take soccer to the next level here in Rockdale County. Also, I want to, uh, say to our parents, and I don't know where you are, I don't have any small kids, and my children are all grown, uh, but for those parents who have young people who, uh, interested in the trick-or-treat and the Halloween, Halloween is coming up, I want to say by all means, you, uh, think through it, uh, think through it. It's a whole different kind of world we're living in now. Uh, if you do take your baby out there and, and, and go trick-or-treating door-to-door, check the candy.
Absolutely.
And check what may look like candy.
Right.
Uh, I've been paying attention, Alice, to the news, and, uh, there's some bad people out there doing some tricky stuff and putting things in that may appear to be like Skittles and, and all that stuff. Check it out. And, and let me say this, because I know I've got some old-school parents with some grandbabies and, and whatnot, you don't check it out by testing it like your mom and them did back, and it, they don't, don't put it in your mouth. Don't put it in your mouth. I know mom and them used to bite it off and break it off and test it, make sure it was alright back in the, y'all know, but you remember your mom and your grandmom.
I remember me.
They would, but, don't do that, because you might be breaking off something for the last time, and we don't want that to happen. So I have to be very graphic about it because this is serious, and we want to make sure, because there's some mean people in these communities. We want to make sure these babies are not come across, and some of the stuff, let me say this, uh, Captain Pastor, you can just put your hand on it. You can just touch it, and you'd be in a hot mess. So Halloween is coming up. If, uh, the churches don't call theirs Halloween, they don't do that. They do, they give it a whole different kind of Oktoberfest.
Trunk-a-Tree.
Trunk-a-Tree, that kind of, there, there's, uh, I, I, I believe that the churches would be a safe place, but I still tell you to check it anyway.
Right.
Even at the church. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there. I wanted to make sure I say that. Uh, the other thing, I had a resident call me the other day, um, because folks still get confused as to what we're in charge of. As you know, it is now dark at 7:00 AM, and I had a lady call me about the school bus. So let me just say this, uh, uh, school is still in session. Slow down as you're going through the neighborhoods and the communities. It's darker out. Some of our children are getting on the bus at 6:30, 6:45, 7 o'clock, and it's still dark. So slow down as you're going through the communities and look out, uh, for the young people. Uh, parents, if you have a, a baby, a, a school-aged child that's getting on the school bus, uh, it would be important that you put on something bright or something, uh, if you can stay out there with them, number one, if you, if you have that flexibility, but if you need to put something on that will illuminate that baby, don't put them all in all dark clothing. It's already dark out there. This is real stuff that we have to be concerned about as relate to our community, so, uh, slow down and to the motors. I know you got to, uh, get to work and stop by the Coffer House a lot, but slow down as you drive like your child lives here, you know? Slow down, slow it down.
Amen.
So, uh, I want to say that. And then the last thing I have is, I, I want to echo what, uh, Commissioner Williams said. Go vote.
Amen.
Get to the polls. Go vote. Go vote, Rockdale. Go vote, go vote, go vote. Make no excuse.